We got a bunch of stuff going on tonight. I didn't see him out there. Well, at least I got a good number. Number four.
I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, August the 1st, 2016. I want to welcome everyone. Very glad to have with us tonight Pastor Mitch Rumpay of the Square Church at 981 Patterson Springs Street. He's gonna come forward at this time, give our invocation, and also lead us in place to the flag. So would everyone please rise?
Father, we just take a moment and declare that you are Lord, that you are good. God, ask for clarity, God, for peace, for unity, Lord, that you would move and bring the city of Smyrna together, Lord, that you would move across socioeconomic divides, Lord, that you would bring peace and your clarity, Lord, that we would follow your will, that we would move as hands and feet for your vision for this city, God. Lord, and we love you, and we trust you, and we surrender to you, Lord. Let your kingdom come and your will be done. In Jesus' name, amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The Square Church is a little bit of a square church, right on Patterson Springs, right down from the community center. I'm sure they'd love to have anybody new in town. It's a smaller church, I'll tell you that. This is a good church. Thank you very much. The agenda changes. We do not have any, but we do have a couple of folks that are not here. Terry Nellowich and Susan Wilkinson are both on vacation, so there's only five elected officials here tonight. Under the mayor's report, we have recognition of Nikka Jack Elementary students, Riley Davis and Jonathan Fairgreaves, first-place winners at the National Invention Convention and Entrepreneurship Exposition Competition, Washington, DC. Somebody, I know it's gotta be some of these people in there. Somebody's gonna come forward and make a presentation. I did have their names. I was so concentrated on the pastor's name, Rumpay. Somebody wanna come up and introduce the kids and then tell us what they did and what they invented? Don't be afraid. These are the two guys, huh?
Do we speak this way or...
Yeah, you can speak in, because there's a camera here, I think.
Well, my name is Dana Zun, and this is Amanda Wood. This is Jonathan Fairgreaves and Riley Davis, and they were our fifth graders last year at Nikka Jack Elementary. And this is the retired, sadly, Principal Beverly Lloyd.
Well, you look so calm now.
Yes, but Inventure, I guess, was born out of a Georgia Tech program that they had, really, for their college aid students, and they just opened it last year to K-12. Well, we entered, and if you think of Inventure, I would describe it as Shark Tank. You come up with a problem, and then you design a solution. So I will let, do either of you feel comfortable talking about what you did?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna let them just share a little bit about what they did, but...
Pull that microphone down so they can speak.
But they won at Georgia Tech, they won what's called the People's Choice Award, and at that time, we were not sure, we thought that that was our only award. Little did we know, the first day of our spring break, we got a call from Georgia Tech, "We can take your People's Choice Award to DC to compete." So that was quite a shock. We go to DC, and they won, first place.
Unbelievable.
Tell them about, really, I guess, your invention, and a little bit, you've done this several times.
So our invention was a little device using PVZ pipe, a 10-milliliter syringe, and a tip that could be used to puncture a cactus and draw water and gel out of them in third-world countries, and the gel could purify water to give a sustainable water source to the people of third-world countries.
So you're saying that you put this thing in, and you withdrew it once, after the other end would come water that was good?
Yes, sir.
That's pretty neat.
Patent pending.
You guys maybe have some money.
That's what we were told, or they were told that.
So how did y'all figure it out? I mean, did y'all just...
So our invention started way before with a sprinkler meant to conserve water, but that was patented, so we went more into water conservation. And we were thinking about third-world countries, and we knew that cactuses grew a lot there. And we found this one cactus called the prickly pear cactus.
The perky pear?
Prickly pear cactus. And it has gel inside that purifies its own water, so we took that and we sort of just flew with it.
Y'all have any of that water here tonight?
No, we don't.
Not currently.
I'd like our city administrator and our city attorney to try it and see if it's ready, see what happens, so. And, you know, y'all got great hair, you look like it.
Thank you.
And so what did your partner have to do with it? Was he just...
I, he was more on the design part of it. I did a lot of the background research about it. Like, how big it was, how many people it could sustain. And it can sustain nine people for a whole year. And what our device does is it punctures the cactus, but instead of killing it, it allows it to still regenerate and grow back. And one of these cactuses can grow one new pad in one to two weeks. It's also about six feet tall, 10 to 15 feet long, and we mostly use it for aid workers, but we would make some profit out of it on camping stuff such as REI or the North Face.
So y'all could be on Shark Tank, and they could... Those guys are pretty mean, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, you've seen them before?
Yeah.
Well, that's great, and these are kids that go to, they got some more?
Well, they're going to take this to their households. So, you know, we hope to see more edits within call.
Right. And this is great, and of course, I think our public schools are exceptional. This is just an example of former principal Parks is a great leadership in the...
Can I ask you something?
Yeah, go ahead.
How big is this thing?
The device of the cactus.
The whole device?
The device is about this long.
Okay.
And it's less, it's very, very light.
And we can manufacture it for under $2.
And so how much y'all want from us, and what percent are you willing to give?
Well, we would most likely sell it to aid workers for about $4, so we could make another one. And we'd probably sell it at other stores for $12 to $20, because...
They're getting one.
Make a profit, and camping stuff, all in all, is very expensive.
Camping, camping.
Yes. The tents, just the backpacks can be $80 to $150.
That's pretty much why I don't camp. I'd rather stay like a Sheraton or a, too expensive.
And hikers and campers, they always want another solution, just in case their water supply runs low, so this would be another solution for them.
That's great. Can we ask one more question?
We have questions.
No, you don't say that. No, I think it's great. When I first saw this on the agenda, I said, "What do these kids do?" But it's unbelievable that you're just, you're just regular people, aren't you? I mean, I look like regular guys. Oh, school started today, didn't it? How'd that go today?
Well, he's going to a private school, so he hasn't started it yet. But for me, Griffin was, it was good. I like all the teachers I have, so...
So you went from Nikka Jack to Griffin, right?
Yes, sir.
You know Abby Mize, that's my granddaughter?
Uh...
I'll send you a picture of her, she's a pretty neat kid. I mean, she's not looking for anybody, she just... But she went from King Springs to Griffin, this is her last year, and she's, Griffin was really great for her, and she's pretty rotten, she's pretty spoiled, but she's a good kid, too. There's gotta be some parents or somebody, somebody either photoing this for a lawsuit or something. So who are all the folks in the back?
So this is Riley's mother, Kelly Davis.
Hi, Kelly.
That's Beverly Lloyd.
Right.
I want to say, and I want to get this right, for 42, 43 years.
That's unbelievable.
And then John Fairgreaves' parents, father and mother and sister.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Beverly Lloyd, 43 years in public service. This is Kelly Davis, Riley's mother, and we have John Fairgreaves' sister, Tessa, and then Mr. and Mrs. Fairgreaves, John's, John's parents, so...
There's some other folks back there.
No lawsuit, we're friends, the Daves. Oh, hi!
Hey, they're wanting to get some of that money when it gets patented, is what they want. Now, it's great. Thank y'all so much, and...
Thank you.
Y'all keep inventing, you can just invent something once a year or something.
Right.
Y'all are pretty smart guys, seems like, you look smart.
Thank you.
Thank y'all so much.
Well, thank you for the recognition.
Before we get into the department head reports, I do want to report one quick thing. Some folks maybe know about the date, August the 1st. That's a date that I pretty much set, and I just pulled that out of the air, because I was being interviewed by Channel 46 concerning a noise issue at our recycling center, and I said, "Well, we'll have some kind of resolution, and we're gonna figure this thing out, and we'll have an answer by August the 1st." Today's August the 1st, and I will tell you what we have done and what we're gonna do. First of all, we will continue to accept glass at our recycling center. We are one of, or the only government in Cobb County that has a recycling center that accepts glass. It's, some places, most places, it's just too expensive, they cannot, it costs them money to recycle it, and they've chosen not to do that. So as a result of that, I mean, we have figured out a way where we make a little bit of money off of it, but we're getting a lot of it, because I'm sure if somebody calls and says, "Where can I take our recycling products in Smyrna?", and we got a brand-new facility, we got a bunch of, we got large bins, and with that, we have some issues with noise, and there's no question about it. What we have done is this, is that we have changed the method that we accept the glass. It used to be that you could just pull in, pull around to the back of where the bins are, and just throw your glass in there. You had to separate it, the clear, the brown, the green, but you could, and I've seen folks do it, they have a good time, they start slinging the stuff and making a lot of noise. You will now pull in and just deposit your glass, and then we will put it in the bins. We don't have to do it maybe once, twice, three times a week. Or now, I think, if you pulled up, you could have 20 cars in a day that would dump out the recycling, and especially glass would make a lot of noise. There was also an issue with what they call raking the bins, and that means that as the bins, and these are 30-yard containers, which is a good-sized container, fills up on one end, because that's where folks are dumping it, they have to rake it, and that makes noise. And we opened up a year ago, we promised the neighbors, Corky Weston, at the time Corky was in Corky's district, and we promised the neighbors we're gonna be good neighbors. And there's still a few issues that we have to get resolved, but this is the beginning. I hope that we can continue to accept glass. A lot of folks are just not accepting it anymore. We make, like I said, we make a little bit of money off of it, but that's the way we're gonna handle it now. A lot of municipalities that used to recycle glass, they had a process where Chatham County, for instance, Savannah, you would pull in, somebody took your glass, and they separated it into a container. That was, you know, sort of like valet parking, I guess, you'd pull up, they'd care that for you. And I'm very sensitive to the neighbors that live in that area. There is noise issues, and we're, this is a step toward, I think, taking care of those noise issues forever. We may even look at reducing the hours that we accept glass, we haven't, we're not there yet, but I do know this, that we need more staff at the recycling center. To me, that's one of the biggest issues, is that we've got three folks over there, and it's just not enough to run that center. It's become, it's bigger, it's newer, it's cleaner, and a lot of people are, they want to save the planet, and so they're doing good things, but here recently, they have been overwhelmed with the number of folks that are coming in with paper, plastics, we accept just about everything, electronics. We were there today, the city administrator, myself, and the deputy city administrator, and we went in there, of course, they're closed on Monday, but the issue is, we just don't have enough staff over there. But we're moving toward that. Hopefully, you will not, the neighbors will not hear the raking noise anymore, and for us to reduce the number of times that, probably about 60 times a week, folks will dump their glass in there to three or four times a week, so. That's the solution to the issue, other than, like I said, we did talk about a number of things. Some things were gonna cost as much as $65,000, that was to put up curtains, and I just was not in favor of spending $65,000, taxpayers' money, and knowing that maybe six months that the market may even get worse, and we may not be able to accept glass, period. So we know our citizens like to recycle, and I think the citizens around us like to also, like I said, we're the only ones that I know of in the area that accept glass products. Roswell does, I think, Sandy Springs, so. August 1st, that's my report on that. Department head reports, Mr. Mike Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two departments that are gonna be presenting department head reports. The first will be from our library department. Normally, this would be Ms. Mary Moore, but we are honored to have Rebecca Power here. She's our youth services librarian, will be presenting on behalf of the library. So take it away, Rebecca.
Hey, Rebecca.
Good evening, how are you?
Good.
Sorry, I just, I'm a little too short to see. Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Rebecca Power, the youth services librarian for the Smyrna Public Library, and I'm filling in for Mary Moore, our director who's on vacation this week. First, I'd like to give you a few highlights of our summer reading program, which just concluded a couple of weeks ago. The most significant impact that we've made through summer reading is that we put over 1,000 books into Smyrna homes through our reward program. That's more than twice the amount of books that we gave away last year. The Friends of Smyrna Library purchased these books for us so that we could reward every child who read at least one hour each during the summer. As a result of the reward program, we saw a significant increase in traffic in the library. We had a 15.7%, that's 60 items per day increase in juvenile book circulation during summer reading. So families were checking out books, and families were gifted books more than ever Sorry, I went ahead, a slot there.
You're doing good.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, I'd like to tell you about some of our fall classes and events. Block Party is a new program that we have for our 0- to 2-year-olds. It's a large demographic in the Smyrna community, and we have a tremendous demand for programming for families with very young children. Currently, we provide five storytime classes a week for babies, toddlers, and preschoolers, and Block Party will enhance our offerings for that demographic. Block Party will be on the second Tuesday of the month at 10:30. The class will feature a new type of block each month. Most parents have block toys in their own home, but this class will feature a variety of specialty blocks and will give babies something new to explore. People probably take Block Party for granted, but in reality, it's a very important developmental skill. It's called constructive play, and it develops pre-literacy skills. So we want to thank Croy Engineering for their generous grant that allowed us to purchase classroom sets of these blocks. To buy one little set of blocks is not very costly, but when you're buying large types of blocks for 30 children, it adds up very quickly. So thank you to Croy Engineering for their support. Excuse me, new for our tween-aged readers is Coding Dojo. In the past, our teen and tween classes have had a different focus every month. Last fall, we received a grant which allowed us to present an extended series of art workshops for the tweens called Curiosity Creates. The response to that series was extremely positive, so we decided to do a series again this fall. Coding Dojo will focus on basic coding skills. Our target audience is 8- to 12-year-olds, so we'll provide an introduction to coding by using Snap Circuits, Hour of Code, Scratch, and Ozobots. Ozobots are really cool, they're these small, little robots that you can program using different colors. So we'd like to thank Gas South for their generous grant, which allowed us to purchase extra Snap Circuits for the children and the Ozobots that we needed for this course. We're also receiving support from the Smyrna Technology Initiative, the New York Code and Design Academy, and other community volunteers who are helping us launch this program. It'll be on the second Tuesday of the month, starting August 9th, at 6:00 PM. It's specifically for children aged 8 to 12, and we have a very limited amount of room, so if anyone's interested, please RSVP to me at rpower@smyrna.gov. Now, you may have noticed a STEM theme emerging in a lot of our programming, and it's not an accident. STEM topics are of high interest to our customers, and they want more learning opportunities for their children, but also for themselves to learn about science, technology, engineering, and math. So this extra workshop about drones in August is a great family class for parents and older kids to attend together. This informational class is sponsored by Kids Drone Zone. The presenter will talk about regulations, the future of drones, drones in industry, and job opportunities related to drones. She'll also discuss the mechanics of operating a drone. So if you're interested in this as a hobby, and you want to learn more about what kind of drone you should buy, or what kind of supplies that you might need, then you'll love this workshop. The speaker will also have a couple of drones on hand to let people look at and handle. We won't fly them in the library, not this time, but this is not a class for little kids. It's not a hands-on workshop, but space is limited, so do RSVP. Next are some highlights for our adult classes and events. In September, we'll host our third annual Smyrna Reads campaign. This is when we invite the entire Smyrna community to read the same book, and this year, we're focusing on the literature of Flannery O'Connor. O'Connor is a famous and award-winning Georgia author who is important to American literature canon due to her contributions to the Southern Gothic tradition. Her writing is for mature readers, so this year, we're only targeting adult readers. We'll have a book discussion, we'll screen a documentary, which was produced by a Smyrnan, and have a biographical lecture and tea. We'll also have a painting party, just for fun. Flannery O'Connor was famous for her pet peacocks, so we'll be painting pictures of peacock feathers. For more details about all of the events for Smyrna Reads, you can visit smyrnareads.com. Also in September, we will host a traveling exhibit from the Bandy Heritage Center about the Dixie Highway. And on Sunday, September 11th, Sandy Lawrence from the Georgia Department of Transportation will present a lecture and slideshow about the history of the Dixie Highway. In October, Genealogy 101 is back by popular demand. We hosted this series back in the spring and had a full-capacity audience. The class is three weeks and designed for beginning researchers. It's taught by professional genealogist Diane Barfield, and topics include getting started, using census records, and researching vital records. Her presentation is underwritten by the Friends of Smyrna Library, and several people who couldn't attend last spring said that they would attend an evening class. So this series will be on three Mondays in October, and there is limited availability for this class, so please RSVP for that. As always, there are many ways to stay in touch with the library and know all of the wonderful things that we're doing through our newsletters and our social media channels, or you can visit us at smyrnalibrary.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have you slowed down since school started today, or...
It was a little slow today, but we had a lot of little friends in today, it was their first day, and they were very excited to tell us about it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Next up, we have our Director of Community Development, Mr. Ken Sutter, give us an update on his department.
So you asked me to come up here after an invention, and after drones and Snap Circuits.
Yeah, Ken, don't mess this up.
Boy, no pressure. Well, not finding the slideshow. I've got my presentation, but it's just in the work.
He talks to herself quite often.
If you don't mind, Terry, I'm not...
There's somebody right behind you. Lance here.
I can't, I can't get it to go into power, into the mode. Thank you.
Good deal. But unfortunately, your time is up. Go ahead, Ken.
Been nice. Last time I was up here for a quarterly report, I did it in May. The first thing I talked about was our overlay district, which we were working on, on the eastern end of Spring Road and its intersection with Cobb Parkway. This is where the Braves Stadium obviously intersects with the city, and that was the picture from May, and this is a picture from July. So you can see that the Braves Stadium obviously is continuing on. Since that time, we had talked about a Georgia Tech study, and now that tech study is underway. At least the market analysis portion of that study has begun. The student portion of that study starts August 22nd. I reported a lot of firms that staff had visited back in May. We are continuing to do that, and actually, our next meeting is August 11th with Cobb Tourism. So this whole issue of the overlay district and how best to address development pressures on that portion of the city is well underway. We had also talked about Belmont, and in May, I had said, "Oh, we have several new retail establishments..." establishments. Those are on the screen now, and we can now add the last three in Belmont, which is Torta di Napoli is a pizza place, then we have Belmont Cleaners, and then they sprint wireless. So there are 10 retail establishments in Belmont. Now, they are scheduled to be completely open, all of them, we are told sometime mid to late September. This is the retail section of Belmont, and what I wanted to show you is where the restaurants were, because we've had questions regarding that. So, Yellow Blue, which is a Mexican restaurant, is off of the Windy Hill side, and it would be the furthest from the intersection. Then we have Creewood Tavern, which is on the Windy Hill side of the fountain and the plaza there. And as you come around the corner on Atlanta Road, we have the Greek Village Tavern, and then finally, the pizza place, which would be the closest to City Hall on that. So that whole Belmont situation has come a long way just in the last couple of months. We also talked about Jancu. Again, in May, we had a big dirt pile. In July, we have everything under construction. The public grocery store is well under construction, as you can see. The two-corner retail buildings have put their steel up, and that is under construction. What people may not realize, because it's in the back and is harder to see at the moment, is that the apartments, which will be known as Alta Jancu Apartments, are indeed under construction as well with that. The out parcel, that would be next to the Smyrna Museum, which would be the northernmost end of that development. We have no final plans submitted on that. We call that the freestanding retail building, but we are in discussions with the owner of the property to bring back to you some design changes and possible increase in size for that out parcel, all of which is good news. With Smyrna Grove, in May, I had said there were 10 homeowners. Today, there are 24. They had 24 under contract in May, and we have 22 today. So obviously, a lot of those under contracts in May actually closed down and became true homeowners. The average sale price came down just a little bit from May, but it is still well over, in the high 300s at 392,000.
And Ken, for folks that may not know, this is directly behind where Adventure Outdoors is on South Cobb Drive, and it was a 747-unit apartment complex.
Yes, that's exactly right. Co-compliance, year-to-date, from January to June, we have a little over 1,000 violations have been reported and have been processed. There have been 10 court sessions. 37 properties actually went to court, so obviously, you can see that it's a very small amount, a number of properties that we actually get into court, meaning the majority of people, once they're informed of their violation, do come into compliance. And that's the way we run the department, is we're after compliance, we're not after retribution. But those 37 properties did generate 55 violations, which is about 5% of the total, and a little over $25,000 in total fines so far this year. One other thing related to our co-compliance is, on August 17, we will be doing a joint code sweep with Cobb County in the Old Concord Road Church Street area, because that goes in and out between the city and the county in that area. So that is already scheduled and on the calendar. In our planning and zoning areas, again, year-to-date, we have processed 13 rezonings, 46 variances. We've had two annexations and two code amendments that we have dealt with in the first six months. We've talked about our corridor studies. The South Cobb Corridor Study, which is from Windy Hill Road to Concord Road, has been awarded. So we've gotten through that process, and we are right now trying to set those initial meetings up with the consultants to get underway. Again, back in May, those were in the beginning stages. The LCI Spring Road Corridor, we have put that out for our queues. All those submittals have been received and are currently under review. So we will have a decision on that this month in August. And with that, I am finished and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Ken, we know there's a lot of things going on, but you'll never starve in Smyrna, Georgia. There's restaurants to come, and I think we're doing two or three alcoholic beverage licenses tonight in relationship to the restaurants.
There are three alcohol beverage licenses on the agenda tonight for three of the four restaurants that are in Belmont. The fourth one actually received their alcohol license at the last meeting. So yes, it's a great time to be in Smyrna, and I am honored and pleased to be your Community Development Director.
And thank you for all your hard work, and your staff, too. And Dan, thanks for fixing his computer. Would be here all night. Thank you, Ken. That is? Big conclusion. Item five is land issues, zoning and annexation. A 2016-303, approval of extended work hours for Wood Partners LLC to complete the multifamily component of the Jancu Development Land Lots 559 and 594, 12.62 acres, northeast corner of the intersection of Spring Road and Atlanta Road, Wood Partners LLC. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Several months ago, the council entertained a variance for plateau excavation for extended work hours on this site. That allowed them to work between 7:00 a.m. and 7:30 p.m. Monday through Saturday with no work on Sunday. There was enough deviation in this particular request that it seemed appropriate that the staff had just come back before council. There's a couple of things here that are different. Wood Partners is wanting to do work Monday through Saturday from 6:00 a.m. to 7:30. They want to continue with no work on Sunday. That would allow an additional two and a half hours through the week, and additional four and a half hours on Saturday. And the idea is to get in, get this work done, to meet the completion schedule, which is the end of this year for the Jancu Development. One of the nuances is the concrete pores. The work that they're doing so much concrete work on is a multifamily in the parking garage, and there are some very large concrete pores that'll go into that construction. The concrete pores take a lot of time to prep and to place, and they're requesting to start at 3:00 a.m., that's not a typo, and run through 7:30 in the evenings. Now, this will only happen once a week, and it'll occur from July, mid-July, mid-August through the middle of October. So we're looking at probably a dozen of those, about once a week. They will coordinate all of those pores with our Community Development Department if council wishes to grant the variance. And Ken's group has been monitoring this and working with this group. If you have any specific questions, he's here to address those.
This is not a public hearing. It's just a, is that correct?
That's correct, yes. We need council consent to move forward.
Is there anyone here from Wood Partners, or I don't know if you want to, I think it's pretty clear what you want to do. Only question, is there somebody waving a hand or something back in the back? No, I saw you. I just want to make sure that we're not missing anything that might happen. I mean, like backing up of trucks or something that might create.
By doing the pores early in the morning, that gets off the streets.
Right.
Couple hours of pouring, then they'll finish, and it also allows the workers not be in the heat.
Okay. We're good. This is in Terry Nulwich's district. She is not here, and she's asked Councilman Welch to take care of this issue for her.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Terry had asked me to take care of this, and I gave her approval to move forward with it. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve item 2016-303, approval of extended work hours for Wood Partners LLC to complete the multifamily component of the Jancu Development Land Lots 559 and 594, containing 12.62 acres located in the northeast corner of the intersection of Spring Road and Atlanta Road by Wood Partners LLC.
Second.
I have motion second to approve this request. Just so folks will know, if there was an issue after they started, you know, we can bring them back in time, but they can no longer do it. But we've always had a good relationship with Wood Partners, and I've always done what they said they're going to do, so. Okay, any other, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's four, one more. Got it. Okay, that's approved, 5-Zero. Thank you very much. Item six is privileged licenses. A 2016-288, public hearing, privileged license request, 2016-288, beer/wine pouring, 2430 Atlanta Road, Suite 300 through 500. Man, I'm gonna mess this one up. Torta di Napoli?
Napoli.
That looks just, you look just like somebody that would have that kind of name.
I was here two weeks ago.
And this doing business as, the name I just messed up with Trinidad?
Trinity in English.
And it's, man, there's another name. Coke, Coke, is this?
Triada Kokosis in Greek, and Trinity is just fine in English. That's what I go by.
She is the agent. This is, the background, Mr. Jones. See if you can.
Thank you, Mayor.
You good right there, though? You good right there?
Let's see. Triada Kokosis will be the registered agent, who's responsible for the sale of alcohol at the reference location. She's been given a copy of the alcohol beverage ordinance, and she has attended the mandatory awareness workshop. The Smyrna Police Department has completed a background investigation and failed to reveal any information that would preclude the issuance of the license, and our staff is recommending approval.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning the issuance of this license? The record show there is none. We need to swear her in. And this is also in Ms. Terry Nulwich's district. She is not here. Corky Welch will take care of this, and Corky, this is Corky.
Hi, thank you. I'm gonna try not to butcher your name, but Ms. Kokosis, have you had any experience in the past in alcohol sales?
Yes, I currently own several businesses, one in Marietta, which I have a beer and wine alcohol license as well. I was approved two weeks ago for the Greek restaurant that is coming, and then I own another pizzeria in downtown Atlanta that just actually has a alcohol, a small bar section opened up to it.
Can you tell us just a little bit about the training that you put your employees through?
We hold monthly meetings regarding the laws and regulations, how to ID, how to spot fake IDs. I like to give them little questionnaires, just to make sure they're familiar with, you know, anything new or upcoming trends of new fake IDs that might have arisen. We ID everyone that comes in, no matter what their age is or how old they look. So a compliment to the older folks, but everybody gets IDed.
Okay. Are you aware that Smyrna Police Department occasionally has staying operations that go around?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. Any other question from the council?
Where are you located on the map Ken just showed? Are you the first restaurant?
That Greek restaurant will be the one that's where the water fountain is, across from the tavern on Atlanta Street. And then the pizzeria is the one that's going to be closest here, that corner spot.
So you're up close with the hearing aid, the hearing, and is there a barber shop up there?
The barber, yes.
It's a good location.
Very excited.
Are you going to serve that kind of stuff, the kind of liquor that tastes terrible?
At the Greek restaurant, yes, we will have ozo. Cleans out, it's good for you.
Even if you get it real cold, it still just does not set well.
It's a good digestive.
Yeah, really?
Uh-huh. Kills everything in your stomach.
I want to try that.
These are like liquors.
Any other questions about the council?
Mr. Mayor, with that, I'll make a motion to approve item 2016-288, privileged license request for beer/wine pouring at 2430 Atlanta Road, Suite 300-500, Torta di Napoli LLC doing business as Torta di Napoli with Triada Kokosis as the agent.
Second.
Motion second to approve this license request. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. 5-Zero, you got it. You got some of your family back there, something?
I do, I have Irene and Costa. They are cousins, and also will be partners at the store.
Good deal. She did good, didn't she? Good deal. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you, we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
The Greek, hopefully, end of August, and then the pizza, mid-September following.
Thank you. Bye-bye. Item B, 2016-289, public hearing, privileged license request, 2016-289, beer/wine and liquor pouring, 1080 Windy Hill Road, Suite 100. CeeLo Belmont III Inc. doing business as CeeLo Blue Mexican Grill in Cantina. Boy, you got to pick which. You're not quite as, the first one was, okay, the background.
Yes, sir. Mr. Trevino will be the registered agent, in responsibility for the sale of alcohol at the location. He's also been given a copy of the alcoholic beverage ordinance and has attended the mandatory alcohol awareness workshop. The background investigation, Smyrna Police Department did not reveal anything that would preclude the issuance of the license, and staff recommends approval.
This is a public hearing also. Is anyone here who's in opposition to, or they'd like to give any public comment concerning the issuance of this license? Let the record show there is none, Scott. We need to swear the applicant in. Again, this is in Ms. Terry Nulwich's district. She's not here, and Mr. Corky Welch will take care of this.
Thank you. Let's start off with the easy one. Somebody asked why I go, where exactly are you located?
Well, it's gonna be right by the intersection in Windy Hill and Atlanta Road.
Okay.
So you're on where the Rooftop Grill is, or Rooftop you're?
It would be right in the corner.
Okay.
Okay. We'll go through the same routine. Do you have any prior experience with alcohol sales?
Yes, we do. We own the restaurant with my sister and my brother-in-law. We have another restaurant called also CeeLo Blue in the Sprouts area, and I was here less than a year ago.
And can you also tell us a little bit about how you go about training your employees?
Yes, we hold meetings also every month, reminding them every, all the laws and regulations. We also have, at the beginning, each employee go through training, and they are required to get their own alcohol license in order to be able to sell.
Okay. And you're also aware that Smyrna does have staying operations on occasion that send monitors in to try to buy alcohol?
Yes, I am aware.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I have no other questions. Any questions to the council? Hearing done, I make a motion to approve item 2016-289, a public hearing for privileged license request for beer/wine and liquor pouring at 1080 Windy Hill Road, Suite 100. CeeLo Belmont III Incorporated doing business as CeeLo Blue Mexican Grill in Cantina.
Second.
Motion second to approve this beer/wine and liquor pouring license. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. 5-Zero, thank you very much. And you're opening up when? When are y'all opening?
September, hopefully, mid-September.
That's a great location.
Yes, we are.
It's gonna be really good. We look forward to y'all opening up. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, we got one pizza and one Mexican, so here we go. C is 2016-290, public hearing, privileged license request, 2016-290, beer/wine and liquor pouring, 1090 Windy Hill Road, Suite 300. Red Sombrero LLC doing business as Creewood Tavern with Stephen Eliza Santana.
Shimada.
Pretty close.
Pretty close.
Pretty close.
As the agent. Uh, Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Mayor, um, Mr. Shinata will be the registered agent in response for the sale of alcohol at this location. He has been provided a copy of our ordinance and attended the mandatory alcohol awareness workshop. And as with the others, uh, a background investigation conducted by the Smyrna Police Department, uh, did not reveal any information that would preclude the issuance of the license and the staff recommends approval.
Uh, this is a public hearing, is anyone here who's in opposition to or would like to make any public comment concerning the issuance of this, uh, beer, wine and liquor pouring? Let the record show there is none. Again, uh, this is in Ms. Taryn Nella, which is district, she's not here, I'll ask Corky Welch.
Apparently this is the Taryn Nella who showed tonight and she skipped town. Um, I, I, let's start it with the, is that Red Sombrero Doing Business as Creekwood Tavern, is it Mexican or?
No, it is not Mexican. It is, um, basically upscale bar food, uh, American bar fare, um, burgers, wings with several, uh, entrees.
Okay, well, good.
Like.
And it looks like you're right next door to the Cielo Belmont.
We are, we are the rooftop patio.
And I had been on top of that rooftop.
Oh, how'd you like the view?
Well, I couldn't hardly, yeah, I mean, it was good, I would, y'all were just barely getting started, it was neat.
Mm-hmm.
There was nobody there.
It's come a long way.
Said, "Do not enter," and I went on in.
Well, you're the mayor, you can, you can do that.
Actually, I went with Diamond Dallas Page, we went up there and looked at it, so.
Oh.
Look forward to having you in there.
You do yoga with them as well?
Yes.
Good for you.
DDP yoga.
Good for you.
Not your mama's yoga.
So I've heard.
I'll go through a very similar routine, have you had any prior experience with alcohol sales in the past?
Yes, sir.
Uh, tell me a little bit about it if you would.
Uh, we currently own the Whitehall Tavern in the Peachtree Battle Shopping Center in Buckhead. Uh, and I also own the Red Door Tavern in the heart of Buckhead in the entertainment district.
Okay. As far as employee training, what, uh, what type of employee, uh, training do you put your?
All of our staff is trained through the Institute of Responsible Vendors, they are trained, uh, biannually. Uh, we also do training in-house, uh, on a month-to-month basis. And they are given tests, uh, from both us and the institute. Uh, they are not allowed to serve until they are qualified by both.
Okay, and I bet by now you are aware that Smyrna does have staying operations.
I am.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have one, Mr. Shinata, isn't it true that after Buckhead, Smyrna is the hottest trending restaurant market in the metro?
It is. Smyrna actually is the number four city in the country for restaurants right now.
Wow. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'll, uh, make a motion to approve item 2016-290, uh, privilege license request for beer, wine and liquor pouring at 1090 Windy Hill Road Suite 300, Red Sombrero LLC Doing Business as Creekwood Tavern with Stephen Elias Shinata as the agent.
Second.
Motion second to approve this, uh, beer, wine and liquor pouring request. Any other discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved five zero, good luck, you got a great location and.
Thank you very much, we're very excited.
Reputation too, that, which is good.
I'm sorry?
I said, "Your reputation is one I've heard," and I've never been to your place in.
Well, I appreciate it very much, well, we look forward to seeing you guys, uh, at our opening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seven is formal business, uh, 2016-301. Uh, A Approval of the FY16 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant JAG for replacement of dated and obsolete criminal forensic investigative tools and technology amount of $14,908 awarded to the Smyrna Police Department. Mr. Jones, the background, please.
Uh, Mayor, this is an annual, uh, grant that, that the Smyrna Police Department applies for. Uh, you mentioned the amount, $14,908, and it is for the purchase of those criminal investigative forensic investigative tools and technology. Uh, this is a non-match grant, uh, and again, it's an annual grant.
Mr. Derek Norton, who chairs the Public Safety Committee, I'll ask him to please handle that, Mr. Norton.
Sure, be glad to, um, if there's, it's pretty straightforward, if there's no discussion or any other questions, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve item 7A 2016-301 Approval of the FY16 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant JAG for replacement of dated and obsolete criminal forensic investigative tools and technology, the amount of $14,908 awarded to the Smyrna Police Department.
Second.
Motion second to, uh, approve this, uh, grant. Any further discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved five zero. Item 7B under formal business 2016-291 Is Approval to Enter Into a Contract With Motorola Solutions for the replacement of fire station alerting at a cost of $290,000. Mr. Jones, the background?
Uh, Mayor, the Cobb County maintains the, the city's public radio infrastructure and it's an 800 Medicare Hertz system. The P-25 Phase One is what's currently used. The, the county is upgrading to a Phase Two system and once that is complete, the ability for our fire stations to alert off that system will become obsolete. So the $290,000 will upgrade us to the Motorola Fire Station Alerting Platform and the, and Cobb County, um, will be the one that's responsible for housing that. The city entered into an lease agreement with Cobb County some time ago to, to conduct this and the funding is in place through our 2016 loss. Uh, both the police chief and the fire chief and our 911 director, uh, formally request approval of these docu, of these funds.
Uh, this is, uh, once again, public safety, it was shared by Derek Norton, Mr. Norton.
Well, this is something that is, uh, needed for our first responders to operate efficiently and effectively. Um, if there's no other questions or discussion, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve item 7B 2016-291 Approval to Enter Into a Contract With Motorola Solutions for the replacement of fire station alerting at a cost of $290,000.
Second.
A motion second to approve, uh, this agreement contract. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved five zero. Item C under formal business 2016-293 The Reappointment of the Smyrna's Free Board Members as follows. Kate Connor, Mayor's appointee, Tom Bartlett, Ward 1, appointee. Uh, Marge Ignite? Idiakato? That's not the way you pronounce me, anyway, Ward 7, appointee. These are four-year terms that expire August of 2020. I'll entertain a motion from any one of the, um, Ward 1, 7.
Move approval.
Motion second to approve these folks, any discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please vote. One more. That's approved five zero, that's, those are non-paying committees, I don't know if they knew that or not, but they don't pay anything. Item D 2016-311 Approval of Ward 2 Appointment to the Smyrna Free Board Julia Richardson for a four-year term to expire August 2020, Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
If there's no opposition, I'm going to make a motion to approve 2016-311 Approval of the Ward 2 Representative Julia Richardson for a four-year term to expire August 20th, 2020.
Motion second, any discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved five zero. Item E 2016-316 Approval of Ward 4 Appointment to the Smyrna Housing Authority, Miller Davis to complete the existing four-year term to expire 2019, Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, uh, for the approval of item 2016-316 Approval of Ward 4 Appointment, the Smyrna Housing Authority, Mr. Miller Davis to complete the existing four-year term to expire May 2019.
Second.
Motion second to appoint Miller Davis. Uh, any discussion, all those in favor of the motion, please vote. One more. Through five zero, commercial building permits, if we have none, I take it. Mr. Jones, please, uh, the consent agenda for council's approval.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, there are three items for your consideration on tonight's consent agenda. One is approval of your July 18th meeting minutes for the mayor and council meeting. The second is approval to use the council chambers for vining forest condos, homeowner association meeting to be held on Thursday, August 4th from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And lastly is, uh, a permit for Atkins Park Beer Tavern. It's for a beer trailer for the Smyrna Birthday Celebration, which will occur this Saturday. Uh, the trailer can be placed beginning at 6:00 PM and will run till the event closes at 10:00 PM with the condition that the trailer will be removed immediately following the, uh, birthday celebration and that will be confirmed through our community relations department, Ms. Jennifer Bennett.
He must have compared, to approve the consent agenda. Motion second, all those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved five zero. Uh, before we get into a committee report, and we haven't talked much about it, our annual birthday celebration, this is our 25th. We dedicated the community center and library in August the 3rd, 1991, so it's our 25th anniversary and we're excited about a big event and fireworks and banks and chain and 10% of the Mustangs and a good time, big community event, so. It's this Saturday and it's gonna be hot and it's gonna be sweaty, but, um, it'll be fun, always is. Derek Norton, Ward, uh, Ward 1.
Uh, no report this evening, honor, thank you.
Andrea Bluestein, Ward 2.
All I want to tell you, if you can, join us this Saturday for the birthday celebration. Even though the fireworks drive me crazy, um, when people are shooting them off around the city, I love the fireworks of the celebration, so come and join us, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Corky Welch?
I'll reemphasize, uh, Mr. and Ms., uh, that everybody should come out and have a nice time on Saturday evening, with that, I don't.
You've worked hard tonight, haven't you?
I have no report.
Mr. Ron Fennel?
I just want to remind people it's back to school time, please be cautious and careful with the streets, they're full of school buses, parents eagerly getting their kids moved around and kids along sidewalks and sometimes they're not always paying attention, maybe they're doing Pokemon Go or whatever. But, uh, it's a time for us to start urging additional caution to protect those. And finally, I mentioned a town hall meeting that I had scheduled for, uh, this month, early in the month. Since both of the, uh, uh, items that I had for discussion have been postponed, we're moving our town hall meeting to September and I'll announce the date as we get a little closer. Thank you.
Mr. Mike Jones?
Nothing, report, sir.
Scott Cocken. Mr. Terry Graham, thank you. We have no show, cause we're, we got a couple of folks signed up for citizens input. Alec Bakri, 3459 Shawnee Trail, comments.
My first comment is, watching tonight, I hope the city considers a new system in here where we can hear you all speak better. The acoustic is terrible and some of the people that have spoke here tonight, we can hardly hear them from the middle back. And I understand other people have addressed this with you and I hope you look into that. My second comment, I haven't had an update on what the definitive plan is for the Reed House and I'd like to ask anybody in front of me, since you do answer some of the people in citizens input, um, what are the plans now for the Reed House? People have asked me and I have heard, no update on it. Is there anyone in front of me that can tell me what the plans are for the Reed House?
Uh, we have plans, but as you know, we don't answer, we don't debate or.
I'm sorry?
If you'd like to, we can explain that, uh, once the citizens input portion's over.
So who can I contact tomorrow? I'm sorry, I can't, believe it or not, I hear you.
This man right here. Corky Welch?
I can contact you? Okay. Um, that's good, I appreciate that because, uh, we haven't had an update on that and, uh, I'll look forward to contacting you tomorrow and getting the update on that. But again, the coast sticks in here is awful and, uh, please consider that and I'll follow up with you on, tomorrow on that comment. And, uh, thank you very much.
Uh, let's see, the second speaker is. Randy Jordan, 837 Wells Circle, comments.
Uh, I've really enjoyed watching y'all do your, your business tonight, this has been great. My comment is about a, uh, and I mentioned it during the last council meeting, is about a variance that was approved and I want to address it tonight and also would like to get for the public record the, the petition signed by the people on that street, can I give it to the city clerk?
Yeah.
Now, part of the public record. My comment and concern is that we have a variance that had public opposition, no, all against, none for. We had a split vote on the board, it wasn't unanimous. We had an applicant that did not provide all the documentation as required by the application and stated on the city, um, website. We had poor, if any, notification to the neighborhood. And yet, uh, I can't seem to get anybody that says, you know, you're right, that's, there's something wrong here, it didn't work in this case. Normally it probably does. So again, I'm asking for, um, everybody's consideration. Susan's not here, my councilwoman, who has been, um, she listens to me. Second comment I'd like to make is, Wells Circle is on the west side of the Public Works Facility. And there is a creek that runs parallel to Wells Circle. And, uh, all the drainage from the Public Works Facility drains down this creek and it floods the properties of three homes in particular. It didn't do that three years ago. It's doing it now. I walked up the creek today and I saw the erosion is just terrible. There's no erosion control on the top of the Public Works Facility. There are two fences, uh, silt fences that are not continuous and they're not maintained. There's debris and concrete debris, now, of course, I went onto the city property there. There's debris and all kinds of stuff thrown down into there. This is originating, this drainage and, and flooding problem from the Public Works Facility. And I want you all to be aware of that and I will continue bringing that up. And thank you very much. My name is Randy Jordan, my phone number is 770-560-6243. My email is randy.jordan@charter.net. Thanks.
Angie Ru, Ru, Ruvalo, uh, 5968 Hayden Place, Bableton, comments, Oakdale Road.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm here to represent the residents of the enclave at Oakdale and the other citizens that live on subdivisions on this road. I come before you to ask that you would consider the horrendous traffic situation that we are currently dealing with on this road. Our first course of action was to contact Ron Fennel, our councilman, to seek assistance and was told that this is not only a city of Smyrna issue, but it's also a Cobb County issue. Mr. Fennel, um, you told us to contact Cobb County, but we feel that you are our elected representative and that you should be working for us and with us and that you should be the one, so that you should be the one also contacting them as well. This was not the first pushback I had from Mr. Fennel regarding some other issues with the Wendy's on South Cobb and, uh, Kenwood. He told me I needed to contact the zoning, um, person. But anyways, that's another story. Our second course of action was to compact the, to contact the commuter dude, Jerry Carnes with Channel 11 and he ran a clip last Thursday, um, on July 28th interviewing individuals who witness the same thing that we all do and what people do basically is they drive down the center lane on Oakdale Road. They don't wait if they're at the light, they will cut in front of you and pass you and go down Oakdale Road. If they're, so say from, uh, Dickerson, the light at Dickerson to Veterans Memorial, which I understand part of this weaves in and out of the city and into the county. People will travel that center lane all the way down to Veterans in order to avoid making, sitting in line waiting to make that left-hand turn. They also do it going the opposite direction in the morning when school is in session, going to, on Oakdale, going towards Highland Parkway at Buckner. They will not wait in that line for the traffic light to turn left onto Buckner and they will drive down the middle of the lane down Oakdale Road. And then again, going towards Highland Parkway, um, right before you get to. Right before you get to Highland Parkway, they'll start driving down the middle to make that left-hand turn. So it's an issue all up and down Oakdale Road. So Mr. Karns said he spoke with both the city of Smyrna and Cobb County, and that there's SPOSS money that could possibly be used towards improvements on this road. Currently, I'm sure you know, we have hundreds of cars and 18-wheelers traveling Oakdale Road because we have FedEx and some other big companies on there. During the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. and 4:00 p.m. and 6:30 p.m., in particular, people tend to utilize the middle lane to travel to avoid sitting in the traffic. School started back today. Whitfield starts back on the 16th, and the bottlenecks are specifically Robert's Drive to Veterans Memorial, Buckner Road, taking a left-hand turn off to Oakdale, and then again, Highland Parkway to Oakdale for people making a left-hand turn onto Highland Parkway. This has become a traffic nightmare for residents who live in this subdivision. Several of them are here with me tonight. We've had several accidents. While we know it's not a quick fix, we ask that you would consider a short-term fix, possibly sending out more City of Smyrna police officers to ticket people in the mornings and in the afternoons.
And you need to wrap it up, because I've let you go over a little bit.
So, I'm sorry.
That's okay. It's your first time, so it's okay.
So possibly barrels or poles stagnated down the middle of Oakdale Road. If, in fact, there is SPOSS money, the idea of what you've done down Concord and Atlanta Road would be fabulous down Oakdale Road.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you. And I have a map and a thing. Can I leave it for you guys?
Leave that with the city clerk.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Cynthia Lawrence, 1350 Overlook Cove, Smyrna, Georgia, comments.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, council folks. Ms. Bluestein, if you would, and Mr. Welch, if you would please let Ms. Anulowicz know that I did try to contact Hunter Hill's office. I think he's probably on vacation or something about the state law regarding the fireworks, as we spoke about a month ago regarding that. So I'm hoping to follow up on that soon. The only other thing that I want to mention to the council is that our state, our local State House Representative Stacy Evans had a community forum in which our police department also attended, and it was hosted by the Greater Zion Baptist Church on Village Parkway, and there was really a good attendance, and I think it was also mentioned that we got some good press coverage in the Marietta Daily Journal for that also. And I just wanted to publicly thank Deputy Chief Harvey. He represented Smyrna very, very well in that instance. He gave some good suggestions to the folks that attended this community forum. The whole purpose was really to provide a good relationship between the community and the police. One thing that I personally learned was not aware of is that apparently there is some sort of a program whereby the churches partner with the precincts in supporting their local police, and I would just like to make sure that that is promoted, because it sounds like it's a very, very wise thing to help our public safety officers in protecting our communities. So I really applaud Chief Lee, whatever he's done in his department for that, and thank you again for your work.
That concludes the citizens' input. And just so folks know is that we give folks an opportunity to speak at the end of the meeting, their name, their address, and they put what the topic is, and like tonight, I'll let Angie go a little over, which is the first time she spoke that I can remember. But I will tell you this, for those that spoke, and Randy, you had some issues about drainage. You can give this guy right here after the meeting, he'll help you. Same thing, Angie, I know that you've dealt with Mr. Fennel, but Mr. Jones is here 24/7. He's here all day, and he can usually answer the questions that, you know, that you bring before us, and we try not to get in a debate with our citizens. We'd just be here all night.
Absolutely.
But thank you so much for coming up, you know, during the citizens', that's what it's for. You can just do about anything, but thanks for having enough interest in our community to come up. Anything else? Do we have anything? These people brought before. If not, then I declare this meeting adjourned. Don't forget about our birthday celebration this Saturday night. It's going to be about 60 degrees.
That Celsius?
Yes, that's a... The meeting adjourned 8:14. Scott.